Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a board of presidents, we're going to put stands for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you're Pete is up.
I'm up.
Because he's the only citizen here.
Well, I, I, I think, most of you know me, I'm a resident of Vernon Hills, and our business is here in Vernon Hills, but I'm actually here on behalf of the Lake County Transportation Alliance Board, of which I am president. And at our annual meeting in November, Representative Tim Butler gave us a bicentennial flag to award, well, actually, it was a drawing that was held, and because you are a member of the organization, and Dave Brown attended on your behalf, and his card was chosen, the village of Vernon Hills gets a 200-year bicentennial flag, so, um, so I am presenting this to the village.
All right, well, thanks, Pete.
So I'm not sure where you want to hang it, but, uh...
I don't know, put it somewhere.
Yeah. You have to get another, yeah, another flag pole there, but, uh,
Yeah.
I thank you for the opportunity to present it to you, and any questions?
The other side finished, or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both sides?
It's both sides.
Oh, where's the other side?
That's...
Yeah, just like one...
One size fits all.
One size fits all.
You gotta hang it like that.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, it looks okay.
Nice little memento to celebrate our state's 200-year anniversary.
I paid for the flag.
Tim Butler paid for it.
And Butler's...
He's a state rep from Springfield.
Okay.
Represents, uh...
Because I know that state didn't pay for it, because they don't have any...
No, no, it was, uh...
They're indigent.
Nice little gift that he brought for our, our meeting, so...
All right, okay, Pete.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Have a great meeting, I know it's gonna be a long one, I think, right?
You want it to be?
A fun, a fun one.
No, okay, all right, Pete, see you, thanks.
Later, bye. Have a great holiday, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you too. All right, so, we, we're not doing anything else, are we, or do you want to?
That's it.
We're gonna adjourn to recess in the closed session, right?
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion, Ted, except?
Come ahead.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Then he knows, yeah, ayes have it, okay. Yeah, okay, all right, uh, the motion carries. Okay, I gotta sign this, so...
No, the record is over, that's fine.
Okay. Just a few.
And I hate to do this.
Aye.
Aye.
What are you about to say?
Aye.
Any nays? No.
All right, no nays, okay, we're back in session. We're not going into closed session anymore tonight. Correctamundo? Yeah, okay, all right, so, we gotta go through, uh, if I get my pages here.
You've got a...
All right, we already did Manheart, we did, 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 Liquor License Commission hearing is January 2nd?
No, 8th, February.
January 8th.
8th, 8th, okay.
That's the day after the national championship game, correct? Correct, I don't need any answer to that. Next village board and committee, the whole meeting, is January 8th, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Village manager's snowstorm report.
I didn't know what to call this, so I just put that under the heading, but what I wanted to do is to publicly thank the Public Works Department and the Police Department
Yeah.
for nothing short of an outstanding job last week. We know that we got about eight inches of really wet, heavy snow,
Yeah.
and if you had the ability or the opportunity to drive outside of Vernon Hills, you didn't want to drive outside of Vernon Hills.
Yeah.
But when you turned into Vernon Hills, the roads were wet, they were clean, and we didn't receive any complaints. As a follow-up to that, because of the heavy snow, a number of tree branches, trees, everything came down. Public Works did a fantastic job of communicating to the residents, doing special yard waste pickups, uh, branch pickups, and I know they even went, I know we're not supposed to say this, but they even went on private property to help a couple elderly individuals remove trees that were down either on their cars or the fence. Also want to thank the Police Department, that snow brought down a power line across Route 60 at about, I don't know, 2 o'clock in the morning, and I think it took Commonwealth Edison until about 5 o'clock in the afternoon the following day to get the power line removed and the traffic restored. They had to staff that position during the snowstorm and afterwards, and reroute traffic down Route Milwaukee, down Milwaukee Avenue and Route 60. They did an absolutely fantastic job, and again, virtually no complaints from anyone. So, just a great job, great teamwork, and this being the first snowfall of the year was a stupendous job, just want to say thank you.
I'll give him two, two cents worth, and that's the thing. This was a heavy snow, and one of the things is pushing snow. It's another thing to push snow and also take down trees, or, or cut up trees that have crossed roads. And I do know even my neighborhood, there was one, and Public Works came out, cut it up, ended up, and then went back and, and helped them remove it, so, uh, it, this was a pretty good snowstorm to the fact of being wet snow. And when it takes in trees, it's, uh, makes it even harder for, for our men on the streets, so, thank you.
So, Dave, good job, and even, you know, the deputy chief there.
Hey, this was like the second storm we've had like this in the last three years, I think. And, you know, if you don't believe in climate change, well, whatever. But with that being said, again, yes, our village guys did a great job. In fact, they wound up clearing Route 60 after Commonwealth Edison got doing their deal, because the state was hardly to be seen.
Right.
And we weren't gonna wait on them.
Which is typical, you know, I mean, sadly...
Yeah, and, and absolutely, and that is the case again. I, I mentioned that to one of our new state rep and a couple others that are in the area. If you can do anything, get the snow removal by the state on par with the communities, or abandon it and let us take it over and pay us to do it, because it's not getting done right.
I think the residents feel that 60 is ours.
Well, yeah, they...
And it's not.
No.
And we've plowed ours, because the state has not done a good job.
Well, Dave, didn't we one time, you know, was it the county or the state, we, we give them salt so they didn't have to go all the way back to their barn or something?
We've horse traded tons of salt back and forth with the various communities and, uh, in the county, yes.
But not the state.
But not the state.
Yeah, that's right.
They have very large stockpiles.
Yeah, where do they, where does the state have to drag?
Where do they, I'm sorry?
To get salt, or the IDOT guys?
Uh, they have it at their, the Grayslake yard, the Gurney yard.
But they literally have to, well, if they run out here, they gotta go back.
Yep, they would.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of one of the things that puts us in a, between a rock and a hard place, because we're dead center between the two yards.
Yeah.
I think Gurney handles the east part of our town, and Grayslake handles 45 in the west part. And it's, yeah, we're, we're at the end of the line.
Yeah.
So, we get short trip.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on that one?
No, sir.
Is that enough, Chief? Is that enough, Dave? All right, next is the unanimous vote agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve A through E and G, I'd like to pull F, just to have full disclosure on that.
Yeah, okay.
Further discussion.
All right, so is there a motion, a second, to approve A through E and G?
I will second it, I think.
Yeah, okay. Roll call. Roll call.
She's looking at it.
Trustee Markbart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next item is, uh, after approval of passing ordinance 2018 dash 159, ordinance amending the village code to provide that the mayor may vote on all matters.
I, I'll make a motion to approve, but subsequently, I'd like the village attorney to, um, educate us on the, all the aspects of this.
And second.
This will become a long meeting. So...
We're already there.
Highlight it.
So, the, uh, Illinois Municipal Code provides for a variety of different vote requirements under different circumstances. There's the obvious, uh, the simple majority that we deal with with most ordinances, most resolutions, et cetera. There are special votes that are outlined in the memo that I sent to you that was done by the previous village attorney that deals with things like zoning variances, special uses, et cetera. The primary differences in all of those can be summarized as whether it's a vote of the corporate authorities or whether it's a vote of the Board of Trustees. The Illinois Municipal Code and the law interpreting that have construed the term Board of Trustees to mean the alderman, or in our case, the trustees, not including the mayor. There are a number of votes, however, that by statute require that they be made of the corporate authorities. And so, in those situations, that does include not only the trustees, but also the mayor. Uh, there was some discussion a couple months ago, um, and there was actually, I think, a thought among several of you that in, at some point in the past, this had already become an ordinance or a rule of, of this body that the mayor could vote on all matters. And so I went back and I researched it, and sure enough, it was an issue that had been raised, it had been researched, there had been an opinion written by prior council, but it had not, uh, been formally acted upon.
No.
So I drafted the ordinance to, to bring it to you. Um, the issue, though, that was raised after I circulated this initially is, okay, so if the mayor votes, what happens then with the veto power, and what happens more specifically with the override? And the way that I've drafted this specifically deals with, um, that it would empower all votes to be made by all of the corporate authorities as, as it relates to the original vote. It does not modify any of the municipal code sections that deal with the mayor's right to veto or this body's right to override that veto. And that language remains, uh, constant and unchanged under this proposal. And in the event of a veto, it would still take a majority of the trustees only, without the mayor having the ability to vote on the override. So it would still take four votes to override the mayor's, the mayor's veto. So that would remain unchanged. Essentially, the vote count doesn't change here either, because for a simple majority, whether you're dealing with four out of six, or five out of seven, you're still dealing with the same basic majority that's required. So, um, things don't really change from that standpoint. Uh, the mayor has been voting, uh, for a long time, uh, we could call it ceremonially, uh, in many regards, or certainly voting, noting for the record that, quote, "I would have voted for this or that." Um, but to, to, to air out that issue, it doesn't do anything to modify this body's right to override a veto.
No, I don't, no.
No. You threaten lots these years.
Is this common in other villages?
I don't think so.
No, I don't.
So, yeah, but, yeah, that, I mean, but that's the key, I mean, if I did, you guys could just say, four of you could go, you know, kill the veto.
Well, and again, the whole point behind this was, the original discussion was, what do we do on those nights when we're down a member or two and, and we have an issue
Right.
that requires four affirmative votes?
Right, and you can't, and you can't really draft the ordinance to say only in situations when there are only five regular trustees or four regular trustees, yeah, that kind of either has the, the right to vote or he doesn't. To answer your question, Trustee Takaoka, um, it really, um, it's a split. Some municipalities have gone this way, others haven't necessarily even encountered the issue. I'm not aware of any that brought it up and voted it down, but it, it simply is, as, as Trustee Cook, uh, mentioned, it's a way to ensure, number one, that you have a quorum and that you have a, uh, an ability to do business. I mean, if you have a situation here where you only have, uh, three trustees and the mayor,
Yeah.
and you don't do this, you really can't pass any legislation that require a majority of the Board of Trustees, because you only have three people here. Whereas when you do this now, you can still do business, you can pay bills, et cetera.
So this is not uncommon, this is not extraordinary, it's just
No.
a matter of...
It's a matter of preference.
Preference, okay.
So there's, is there a motion, a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Markbart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, should I vote on this?
No.
No, 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 wait, just, wait, just, wait.
Ten days, a ten-day waiting period.
You can say for the record, though.
Yeah.
For the record, I vote.
No, for the record, okay, thank you, board. You know, you know, if we, sometimes, yeah, that can't happen, you know, what are you gonna do? Somebody's not here, somebody's in the north woods, they're...
We always hold a good thought.
They're snuck in. Somebody's in a meet, yeah, okay. All right, what else we got, anything?
Unfinished additional business.
Unfinished business.
Yeah.
Approving ordinance.
We have to do something on this, because Mick has already written an article that he published today on this.
Okay. All right, who's hitting, Mike?
Michael is...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is something the board considered at its committee, the whole meeting, on October 2nd. Uh, the ordinance would establish regulations for the placement of charitable donation boxes. It would limit the number per lot at two, it would limit the size of each box to 20 square feet, and the height to be 6 feet 6 inches. Most importantly, uh, the, uh, the ordinance would require posting of information, who owns the box and controls the box, contact information, and that kind of, those kinds of things. Uh, as part of the deliberations at the October 2nd meeting, questions were raised regarding language that would require a license and an associated fee. Uh, so ultimately, uh, the ordinance was forwarded to tonight's meeting to give staff and the village attorney a chance to review, uh, the regulations and determine what the village can legally do, and it was determined, after review by the village attorney, that we cannot license them or charge a fee, but that we can require that they register with the village within 30 days after the box is placed, so, that still gives the...
And that is the landowner, so, in, such as in the case of the Target parking lot, Target Corporate or their representative will be required to, uh, register those boxes.
It's actually a joint and several obligation by both the charity and the landowner, to make sure both people are responsible.
And, and it still works, because if, in some cases, these boxes get dumped by, um, an organization that is, they're impossible to get in contact with, that's fine, we'll deal with the landowner and following up on whatever they need to do to make the boxes comply, so... Uh, so we'd have the regulations in place for the first time to allow us to follow up on those nuisance-type boxes, uh, and we'd have the, uh, we would have the ability to follow up with either the owner or of the property or of the box, or both. One other, uh, change of note is that the boxes would have to be secured at all times. Uh, that was a comment that came up from one of the trustees, part of the last meeting as well. So, if the board believes that the, uh, this amendment to Chapter 10 of the village's Code of Ordinances is appropriate, then a motion, um, approving ordinance 2018 dash 138 is recommended, and that ordinance is attached to your packet.
And what will be the effective date? So, in other words, when will we do the census and notify the property owners and the charitable organizations to the best of our ability to, uh, register these if they don't already come forward to do that?
The ordinance would take place, or would take effect 10 days after its passage. Um, I think staff intends to, um, you know, keep their eye open, do a census for anything we know, notify the appropriate property owners of boxes that we're aware of. There, there will be a, kind of a phase-in program of this to make sure that people have an adequate opportunity to, uh, comply and become aware of, be, be educated about, and, and comply with the requirements.
Yeah, we've already drafted a letter that we'll send out, and we will, as you know, we're, right now, we're working short one inspector, but things are slowing down for us, so I would anticipate within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to go throughout the village, create a list of where these boxes are, and then send the letter out and begin working with the property owners and donation box owners to bring them into compliance. So again, we're looking for a motion to approve ordinance 2018 dash 138.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markbart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, any new business or communication to come before the board?
We're, we're, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to mention something, I, I had this conversation with Dave Brown earlier. I don't know if you've noticed, but the first left going south on Milwaukee into Melody Farm, I saw two cars today go right into the one-way, right, in the left-hand turn lane, because it's not really clear where, you have that little median making that left, and I know, Dave, you had mentioned that you had already made mention of this to Regency, and, you know, you need to sort of, we need to push them, because I saw today two cars, I was right behind them, I'm like, what are they doing? They're turning into the, into the left-hand turn lane, and I'm like, you know what, this is, you know, an accident waiting to happen.
You're talking where the, where the apartment's, right in front of Lazy Dog, or you're talking?
Well, right, if you're going south on Milwaukee, that first left into Atworth, right there, at that light, I'm telling you, you make that turn, if you don't notice that there's that little median, there's that left-hand turn, you gotta make it wide, right, because, but I saw two cars ahead of me, they went right into the left-hand turn lanes. And Dave said he's already had this conversation with Regency.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely spot-on, uh, and it's at the Lazy Dog intersection. It's also at Denny's, when you go to South Bone, you're taking a left turn into the site, the, the exit lanes are a little bit wider, they're either two or three lanes, and so it seems a little wider. So we've asked that they put a sign up that shows that there's a median, and they're to veer to the right side of the median. There's also a couple of internal, uh, pedestrian crossing considerations we've talked to them about, and another, uh, two-stop sign issue, so, uh, staff will reach out to them again, ask them for their timeframe, and we're gonna push it hard, so, good point, thank you.
Do you have, uh, do they have lines in the pathway, sometimes when you're turning left, there'll be lines showing you where to...
Yeah, that's another thing that we talked about, is, uh, the skip dashes. If, uh, if they haven't solved as part of theirs, uh, we do have a permit into IDOT to affect changes on the crossings, to allow west-to-east maneuvers. Right now, those don't exist at either of those intersections, and if they don't do it, we're gonna do it as part of that project and make sure there are skip dashes, I think that will help a lot.
Yep.
Okay, Trustee Cook.
Yeah, on the, on the exact same issue, um, could you also, while you're doing that with them, take a look at the fact that some of the stop signs, when you're coming in, does not have a stop sign, and the cross-traffic does, but the problem is, is that the stop sign is, in a couple of instances, two, three car lengths back from where the actual intersection is. And what I've seen a couple times going in there is, people will stop at that sign and they'll come forward, and, and they're, they, you know, they're already to the corner where traffic is still coming in, and, and they've already cleared the stop sign, so...
Thank you, you've just hit on the other conversation, it's at Kumas, uh, that intersection.
Yeah.
And, uh, they have crossings for pedestrians, stop signs are behind them, which is typical, but it doesn't work, because they can't see as well, so we're looking to have those stop signs moved in.
All the way to the intersection.
We're gonna try that, we're gonna try that first, north-south legs. Um, the distance from Milwaukee Avenue to this first intersection's a little tight, so we, we want to see whether that works first, because visibility will improve before we put a stop sign, because we don't want it to back up to Milwaukee Avenue. So we're gonna, we're, we've told them to affect the change internally.
So you're gonna, you're gonna move the stop signs to the actual intersection?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, we'll have some conversations again with them.
Okay.
Anything else to come before the board?
Uh, briefly.
Turning, huh?
Uh, three things real quick, uh, first of all, administrative adjudications should be finalized by the first meeting in January, uh, with both the omnibus, uh, reworking of, of the ordinances and consolidation of fines into a single place, as well as the administrative adjudication process itself. Uh, secondly, staff is working on an update of our current fees for a variety of issues, um, including, uh, those that are related to the development process. The last time the, uh, fee was updated for internal review as part of the development process, if, for example, our village engineer reviews things internally, uh, that document, I looked at the metadata today, and it's dated in 2004, was the last time it was updated, at $45 an hour for staff time, uh, for those things. And if you look at what we're currently paying, some of our professional staff and various things, you know, if we sort of amortize that out over a 2,000-hour year, it probably is more in line with something in, in the neighborhood of 75, but that'll come forward as a, a separate, uh, recommendation as well. And then I had sent everybody, I believe, an email talking about the, uh, uh, recapture and reimbursement of legal fees that had not been billed as part of the development process to, uh, some of the larger developments as well, and we're in the process of gathering all of that information, finalizing those numbers, and putting together a nice letter, uh, seeking a, uh, Christmas gift back to the village.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, I'm like, yeah. Uh, okay, what, what, I mean, along these lines, uh, what was, we haven't, we haven't approved the, the strategic plan, because we haven't had a discussion on a new strategic plan lately, correct?
To the best of my knowledge, you're correct.
Yeah, and we should do that, because we had the survey that, you know, we sent out, and about 1,500 people responded, you know, about two years ago, you know, and, uh, you know, and, and I kind of appreciated some of the guttural language in there, but it felt truthful to those people. But anyway, we should, we, we gotta have a sit-down and do that, like, maybe we gotta do it on a Saturday and just, eh, you know...
I'll have to go through, uh, the old files and see if they can find it.
Yeah, you know, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good idea, because there was a lot of input, you know, from a lot of people on that one. Uh, also, what about school donations? I mean, we haven't touched that in decades. The Naperville formula, we haven't changed a thing. You know, Sears is revving that engine up, you know, I mean, because I don't, I don't think we've changed it in forever.
Certainly, that's part of the fees discussion I was referencing earlier. Those, those, those donation, those fees, impact fees, et cetera, as well as other fees.
Yeah, because, you know, it's kind of, you know, like...
Souped to nuts.
Well, and then the, you know, the parks get hundreds of thousands of dollars, and all of a sudden, the schools, they're not getting much sometimes, you know, especially adding smaller, you know, apartment units and such, you know, but, uh, yeah, I think we should, should address it, I mean, uh... Because what, what do, I mean, what do we get now for a house, five grand, six grand? If it's a four-bedroom house in Polte, what are they paying?
It's a four-bedroom house, the, the elementary school is getting, uh, somewhere north of $3,000. High school is 20-some hundred dollars, Park District's about $5,000.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know...
And, you know, this, the fees are, are based on the Naperville study, that's what most municipalities are on, it takes into, the formula's taken into account...
But has it been adjusted up?
No, and I can, and I can, I think I can help, the numbers take into account the population count per dwelling unit, depending on the type of dwelling unit, number of bedrooms, takes into account the minimum number of acres to build an elementary school or a high school, and then the number of students those schools could accommodate, and then this is the number we can look at, it takes into account the value of the land per acre, which right now, we've got at 190,000, that's the number that I think we could take a look at.
Yeah, well, that's was used for the Park District, so for, you know...
Is that accurate?
You gotta, yeah, if a thousand, what is it, 1,000 people come in, you get, uh, 10, you gotta donate 10 acres for every 100 people.
Something like that.
Well, it's one, yeah, I think it, well, I'm pretty sure it is, but...
So the land value's the big number, that's the one that we can look at, and see if it's still, if it's still accurate based on our current land values or something, that's the number.
Yeah, well, that hasn't been adjusted in years.
That's correct.
You know, okay, well, let's do that, all right? All right.
You would think that, uh, other municipalities have gone through this process already.
I don't know, I haven't read much about, and, you know what I mean, it's like...
I've gone through it.
No one's updated their, their numbers?
I think it has a lot to do with that everybody's, the Naperville, Naperville formula was upheld in courts, and, and so it's been the, the bedrock, because...
But it hasn't kept up with its...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
To mess with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we look.
As, as I think trustee Cook has said in the past, you know, fifty percent of something is better than a hundred percent of nothing, so.
We can go back and look at the, as Mike suggested, looking at the acreage formula, and that would be.
Absolutely.
But Michael has.
Especially, you know, the other thing that, that typically has not been considered in that is people look at that as a value of an acre, but they don't necessarily then look at what do you do with that acre, because obviously, a vac, an acre has much greater value if you're putting four lots on it than if you're just only putting one lot on it. And so you need to really consider that and how you set the valuation of the formula too. And that's not something that traditionally has been done going back to certainly the nineteen eighties and early nineties, so.
Michael, did you have another?
Yeah, no, I, I concur with what the village attorney said, and it's really the key is that land value number, because you still need the same number of acres to build a certain school. It could still house a certain number of students, and the population counts per dwelling unit are, are still valid based on that study. It's really, to tweak that number means to just, to raise the, the land value on a basis that the board thinks is appropriate.
Right, well, part of the reason for me bringing it up, I just didn't want us to get into trouble if we come up with some number that's considered arbitrary, if, if other municipalities have already looked into it.
Undersee what's been tested.
I have no desire to litigate, uh, relitigate.
Litigate a number.
The Naperville agreement, or whatever you wanna call it.
I certainly think we have enough historical evidence of different, different developments that have been done in town here, where we can look at, you know, the cost per acre of acquiring that versus what, what the acreage ultimately yielded in terms of number of units and so forth. You know, Melody Farms being a, a prime example, just look at the residential component there, and how many units are going in on, on those acres.
Well, how about looking at what it costs to educate a kid per year? I mean, it's gone up significantly, right? Teacher cook? Yeah, I mean, so that's gotta be, that should be factored in.
How is that addressed in the Naperville settlement, though? You know.
It was, it was addressed in the formula.
Yeah, it's really, those numbers are all based on what does it cost to build a school to accommodate the additional children or in addition to the school? It doesn't really take into effect the cost to teach them. It's just, what's the cost to provide adequate facilities for them, you know?
Yeah, nothing's remained flat, you know, so. Yeah, and, and plus, you know, the guys that, that, you know, challenged that, they were doing big subdivisions back then, when the Naperville decision was made, you know. Who's doing a big subdivision now, you know? Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else be, coming before the board?
Yes.
Oh, what else?
Dave has a long speaking part.
Oh, no, no, we gotta, you know, but now we gotta adjourn the board meeting, go to committee of the whole. Aye, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go into committee of the whole?
So made.
Second.
Okay. Vote, voice votes. Okay, I gotta get used to that. Yeah, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? The ayes have it, the board meeting's adjourned. Now we're. Dave?
No, we gotta, we gotta seven minutes to approve.
One minute, okay, yeah.
Am I not correct, is, didn't we have an incident with November twentieth?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, November twentieth is the post-session. This is the minutes.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of November twentieth, two thousand eighteen?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Goes in favor indicate by aye.
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 Any nays? Any ayes have it? All right, motion carries. All right, next is approval of special committee of the whole meeting minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to, second. Whatever, whatever Jim and I want. Pick it, Liz.
Pick it.
All right, is there? Like, this is, this is hard for me. There, is there? No, not a discussion, no, you know, I mean, I always, I'm just so used to go, roll call, please, you know, and, okay.
Indicate by aye.
All in favor indicate with an aye.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it. It's just kinda strange.
Now, let's go back to the.
No, I, I don't know, no, yeah, maybe tonight.
It's a trial.
Go back to what you've been doing.
It's a trial, we may have to go back to that.
You're making us nervous.
Okay, uh, next is, next is the capital approval budget for fiscal year nineteen and twenty.
Thank you very much. Included in your board packet is a spreadsheet that outlines our five-year plan. Really, the, the goal of tonight is to look at the five-year plan, and we're really looking at next year's budget. If there's some things on the five-year plan that you think should be added to next year's budget, please advise staff, and we'll adjust as needed. We also understand that we're presenting the CIP ahead of any information that you've received in terms of our financials, so staff does understand that this is just opportunity to get out in front of things, and we will re-present the details as part of later in the budget process, so. If you have any questions, jump in, interrupt me, otherwise, I'm just gonna keep rolling through it. Road Rehab Project two thousand nineteen was, went before the village board, before one point one million. We've started that, and it's four different sections in town. The preventive maintenance program, the overall dollar amount stays as is in the current budget at two hundred and five thousand in total. We have Reclamite, thirty thousand, crack sealing, twenty-five thousand, pavement marking, fifty thousand, pavement patching, seventy-five thousand, and seal coating of twenty-five thousand.
How's our success rate with the Reclamite?
We are very pleased with our Reclamite process. We, we feel that it's extending the life of the pavement. We're actually looking that potentially our crack sealing program may go by the wayside, and we will be spending more money on Reclamite. We're not seeing the cracking that was exhibited on prior projects without using Reclamite. If we have a one-million-dollar project of just asphalt work, we spend about thirty thousand dollars on Reclamite the following year, and we think we're gonna get at least four more years out of it. So it extends the life of the pavement. That's been our findings.
So how do you apply that?
Uh, it's a spray bar in the back of a truck, and they just go along and spray it onto the pavement. The, the surface on a brand-new roadway becomes very brittle right away, and so by putting a rejuvenator on the surface, it still makes it malleable soft, and you don't get that surface cracking, so I, I think we will be talking to you in three or four years that we may not have a crack sealing program in the future.
Mike made the comment, what, we have, you have to sand it?
Well, you, there's a mixture on top, because it so doesn't stick to your vehicle, so they, they end up, uh, put it on, and then they'll put a coating that protects a little bit from your, and I said a little bit.
So, uh.
So what's in it?
It's a hydrocarbon product.
I've gotten some chapter in first, huh, because I'm recommending it for use in Boulder Junction, Wisconsin.
Okay.
Malteens is what it has.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, trustee Markarth's exactly right. You put sand down so it doesn't stick to people's cars as it's dry, uh, so it allows it to drive, to dry before people drive on it.
And it only takes a couple hours, really, to dry.
Yeah, and, and even quicker, even quicker than that, so.
What, now, what, what's the material now used to do, you know, before you do the top lift after a road's been repaired, like at sixty? What were they using out there? To help seal, you know, the bond?
Yeah. Drawing a blank, uh, tackifier, so basi, basically, it's a, uh, a coating that allows the binder course and the final surface to adhere to one, one another.
So, so that way, they're not using, like, rolls anymore?
What's that?
They're not using, like, the.
Petromat?
Petromat.
Uh, no, we're really getting away from petromat, and now that we're finding when we go through and we grind the, the final surface, we have to make a decision, is a petro, are we gonna stay right above the petromat or go into the petromat? And that's one of the things that we struggle with. Asphalt companies hate when the petromat gets in their system. Yeah, they wanna take the, and reuse that material, and it's got fabric in it. The word I was looking for is prime coat.
Prime coat?
Yeah, it's a prime coat in between those two layers.
That's why Falco doesn't want pizza boxes, because they don't want the sausage juice and everything else in their cardboard.
Makes it adhere to the surface.
Clean material.
Okay, because I know, whatever they were using, was it last year or the year before at sixty? I drove through it, I got sprayed pretty good, you know? I was like, oh, holy shit.
Yeah, but your car won't rust.
Yeah, your car won't rust, it was, yeah, yeah. It was Rhino treated, right?
Many benefits of that product, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, go ahead, Dave.
Annual sidewalk program, we're recommending that it returns to the FY sixteen-seventeen levels, so back to seventy thousand. One year, we dropped it by twenty thousand. There are many needs for concrete curb repair and sidewalks. This is one, bike path. This is something that's been discussed for a period of time. From the Public Works Building, EJNE, adding a bike path to go to Greg's Parkway, it would help with completing one of our, our loops, and so that's something we'd like to get a permit from LDOT and move forward with adding a sidewalk connection between Greg's and the EJNE.
Well, how, how wide would that be?
Uh, six to eight feet.
Yeah, and it'll be how much off of the road?
This area is relatively flat, so we think there will be some separation from back of curb. So we're hoping to have, you know, six feet or so minimum from back of curb. As you get north of Greg's Parkway, a future project, that's when it starts becoming steeper. We'll probably push it a little bit closer to the road to reduce the amount of retaining walls that would be needed along that stretch.
Well, some of the, some of those sidewalks are right on the street.
Yeah, and what you see out there is what LDOT calls is a maintenance strip, so really, it's, it's nothing more than just a thin layer of asphalt. It's not really, it doesn't have any loading of strength. It's just really there because they don't wanna replace sod, and they're starting to get away from that program too, is my understanding.
Okay.
So.
I, I wanna go backwards just for a quick second, to streetscape. One of the things, and, and it isn't in this budget, it's already in, I guess, Mike's budget, is the demolition of the Lashin Center. And one of the big things that came out of that meeting was a desire to recognize that this area is Hawthorne Club, and that other areas are Deer Path or whatever, and there's really no markings of it. The only place where that occurs right now is where there's an HOA. So in Greg's Landing, all, whatever it is, seven or eight pods there, they each have their own signage and whatever. But one of the things that folks were looking at was potentially as an augmentation to this space out here, at a very rudimentary level, some way to annotate that this is Hawthorne Club, and I'm suggesting the same thing for potentially Cherry Valley, and the same thing for Deer Path. I brought this up a number of years ago. I was kinda stymied by Mike Allison and Barb Williams, neither of which are still on this board, so I'm going to bring it up again. I believe that it is something that the residents in those areas would appreciate. Well, yeah, and they don't want to have an HOA, or is there any desire to, to put an HOA together? I, my wife actually created an HOA in our community in Chicago, and that was quite an endeavor. And, you know, it was very loosely fragmented, it wasn't governed by a charter or anything else, but it, it allowed to, to do some good things in the neighborhood. So in lieu of that, I'd like to bring that up, and if nothing else, I'd like to get some ideas from staff, along with some pricing, not necessarily for this year's installation, but potentially in two thousand twenty-one.
Well, okay, you, you, basically, it would be like entrance signs. Wouldn't be nice, ground-mounted entrance signs.
Yeah, yeah.
Simple, but simple.
Simple is how much per sign.
That's.
You know, that's the fly.
Yeah.
And, and where do you draw the line? Now, when you get into New Century Town, are you gonna put one up for NCT number four, NCT number three?
Well, you have a homeowner's decimation there, so.
Well, but what should they pay?
That was your suggestion just a minute ago.
No, but, but that's what I'm saying. You're saying the village is going to, to pay for it. Where do we draw the line? I mean, it, it, I mean, are you, and what are you gonna call it? Are you gonna call it Cherry Valley? Are you gonna call it Country Club Estates? Are you gonna put one up on, on forty-five for, you know, the different, I mean, it's, it's. Your placement of it, where is it going to go? It has. Yeah, you get into New Century Town, and you're talking about.
Could be a day late in the Dallas.
Right. You're talking maybe a dozen signs. And then now, and then go over to the maintenance of it.
I'm just suggesting it's something that was brought up by residents without assistance during the open forum we had concerning the use of the Lashin, and I think it would be something worthwhile following up.
Why don't we just go online and do some crowdfunding?
That's.
See what people in, in Hawthorne Club wanna do, you know? Raise the money, and then, and then we'll help them, we'll help them build the sign.
Deer Path, you gotta have it on both ends, though.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, maybe everybody will kick in, and, you know, it's like passing the, the boot at the Fox Lake fireworks or something, you know?
Just putting it forward for the constituency here, and I'd like, again, at this juncture, I'm looking for.
Well, how about all the people who would still like to have the, the antique lights at, in front of their house? Instead of shoeboxes?
I think everybody would like that, but, uh.
That's big bucks.
Yes, sir, and I'm not talking big bucks there.
You're just talking wooden signs, like, the Field Day occasion signs you did for Peterson and the other guy?
I think it needs to be a little more durable than that. I'd like to see it outlive even you.
Okay, well, I, I would think you'd want to, you know.
So you want masonry, right?
Yeah.
Or a, a giant boulder with a black.
We can take a brass plaque on it.
I mean, you know, yeah, it, that would be, in my mind, that would be adequate, is a, a four-foot-by-four-foot boulder that we got from a quarry with a brass plaque on it, two feet by two feet. That can't cost a whole lot.
And nobody could see it, you know, I mean, what the.
Uh, you can see the street signs, and they're three-inch letters, so Hawthorne Club in four-inch letters on a two-by-two plaque.
So you're gonna cause an accident, because someone's gonna have to look down that rock, they're telling you it's gonna cause an accident.
All right, okay, I don't care if we wanna put it at committee of the whole and talk about it, that's fine.
I, I'm just looking for consensus to have staff, kinda give it a, a real fast look.
Real fast look, I don't wanna spend much time on this, because we're, you're gonna fund the thing, you know?
You know, the Park District has installed a number of these signs, including right across the street here, and a couple other locations. We should be able to check with them and see what they paid for those signs. That should be a real quick check. We can do that.
All right. And what we've done in other communities, you can get very nice monument signs out of masonry for seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars. And frankly, there are some creative ways of approaching that, where ultimately, it wouldn't cost the village any money themselves out of pocket, so.
Thank you for the direction. We'll put something together. We'll share some dollar amounts on that.
Okay, so we're at traffic signals?
So we are at traffic signals. This is something that's been outstanding for almost ten years now. CDW Traffic Signal and Roadway, we're adding it to the Conver. CDW Traffic Signal and Roadway, um, we're adding it to the, uh, conversation. Uh, when we get closer and you guys understand where we're at with the, uh, revenues and expenditures as part of the budget process. Uh, this, I'm sure there'll be more discussion on this one.
Well, a hundred and forty short strokes, right?
Yeah, a hundred and forty thousand is going to be for, uh, getting a permit from IDOT. And then we're gonna spend the one point four million, is it?
Yes, sir.
One point four million for the affecting the change, which is
You know what?
Traffic signals and turn lanes, uh, for CDW.
If, if the wires stay there for the rest of my natural life, I don't care. Because CDW was supposed to pay for that, so was probably, you know, Prentice, you know, probably.
Continental Executive
Yeah, Continental Executive, you know, we weren't supposed to pay a nickel for that stuff, so.
And maybe trying to help with that, it's a, it's a temporary, uh, wood pole with span wires. It isn't a permanent signal.
What we have currently, so you're saying to, to make it permanent like we have
Yes, sir.
Maybe we could, we could appeal to Crasney, he's a billionaire. Come on, put, fix the light, Mike, you know, you're, he doesn't, you know, now he I don't know if he's still into the woodworking thing or not. That was special. He bought a computer that would make wood, you know, like signs for your desk. It said
Can you make a monument?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't, all I know is that, uh, he charged us, he said, yeah, I'll make one for you to the village. And he charged us seventy-five bucks. And I'm going, really?
Trust me, Mark Hurd, I appreciate the lead on the sign. Uh, we'll keep moving forward.
Yeah, no kidding. Alright, are, are we still, uh, you know, just, uh, doing the sidewalks and taking the bumps out, grinding them?
We are. The majority of our sidewalk program is actually, uh, using, um, Safe Step is the company that we usually contract with. And they use a horizontal saw to saw the, uh, trip hazard. And, uh, it's clean, it's less expensive, no
Do anything in the winter?
Um, if it's a trip hazard during the winter, we do have a grinder at Public Works. And, uh, so we'll go and grind it and then ultimately we'll have them come in and do a
I think I gotta hit my significant other call you, cause there's a pretty good one. She says about like that, you know, or boom.
Since you brought it to our attention, we need to look at it.
Alright, go ahead.
Can I ask, what's the update on the, the roundabout? I see that's right above the, the CDW. So there's some money in the future?
Uh, so Lakeview and Greg's Roundabout, um, and then there's a roundabout feasibility study. In, in, in discussions with Greg's Landing North HOA, uh, there was discussions at Lakeview. It's met warrants that we could put a traffic signal in. Uh, we really, uh, have had a lot of good discussions with the HOA. They're not receptive to a traffic signal. We wanted Menards to move forward and then, uh, see how traffic patterns may change. Have some more traffic counts and then have more discussions. I think, uh, most people I've talked to in that area, instead of a traffic signal, they're hoping that potentially it would be a roundabout instead. So, uh, we have money for, uh, we started to move forward with the feasibility study. I got a proposal, but because of those conversations and, uh, Menards hadn't been installed yet, we decided to put it on hold. Um, we will do traffic counts and then based on the traffic counts, and if there is impact at that intersection that people want some change, then we can move forward with, uh, a feasibility study.
So we're waiting for Aldi's to open as well and then some of the other spaces to be completed first before we go forward with that?
Yes, uh, we may do traffic counts sooner than that, but, uh, yeah, Aldi's is about to open, so we certainly would do it after that. So, but we think that, uh, Menards and Aldi's are probably the larger traffic generators. Uh, and on the south, the majority of that's built out. So we're close to having the need for the, the traffic counts again.
I guess it, it does depend on what goes in west of Aldi. There's still that big lot there.
There is. So, streetlights, uh, streetlight LED retrofits, we're going around town, picking different areas. Typically, it's, uh, part of our road program. Georgetown Square, we're looking to buy new LED shoeboxes and in-house, we would i- install those on the existing poles. Uh, LED fixtures and poles, there's old, in River Grove, there's old Sternberg poles, um, they need to be replaced. So that's, uh, the proposal, twenty thousand dollars. Local drainage improvements, twenty-five thousand. Uh, we have one area selected already in Beaver Creek subdivision. Uh, we're looking to extend a storm sewer across one yard because the thirty inch pipe from Libertyville outfalls across someone's backyard. In big storms, it spreads out closer to their house. We tried to have the storm sewer extended as part of Greg's, uh, landing approval, but the watershed development ordinance was too new. Uh, the SMC was not going to allow any exemptions. They wanted to keep, uh, more riverine ditches, uh, to help filter the water before it got into our river and lake system. Um, we're gonna re-approach them and try to affect this change. The impact that it's had on this resident has been going on for fifteen years and Beaver Creek, it's the one to the east. When you pull on Beaver Creek, there's a park at the northeast corner. It's just east of that park. Forgot what the name of the road was. Uh, let's see, Open Space Maintenance, uh, last year, we, was the first year of a multi-year, multi-site, um, maintenance program. So we combine a lot of our open space areas and have one contractor manage them for us. Uh, that's what the hundred and twenty thousand dollars is for, uh, the existing contract. Harvey Lake was not included in that, and I think Harvey Lake, uh, need, we need to go through Harvey Lake and have, uh, uh, four quadrants established and have a four-year, four-year phased program of, uh, improving that area. Um, it's starting to become overgrown. We used to try to do that in-house with my Public Works staff. And we may get out there one year and then it takes us another three years before we can get back to there. So that's why we've included, uh, thirty thousand dollars for that first phase. Nothing at the Metro Station. Uh, this building, the Village Hall, twenty thousand dollars for controllers for the HVAC and boiler system.
Going back just for a second, you, you're showing the line item about the dam removal. Are we giving up on that and abdicating that to whatever, the Army Corps or whatever? Uh, you don't have any dollars, but you're still showing it as a line item.
Yes, uh, so Personally, I would love to see the dam removed. That's immediately east of Buffalo Grove Road.
Right.
Um, we've had some great fish studies and the removal of the dam at the golf course has really shown what benefits it is to remove dams. This one, until we have, um, buy-in from River Grove residents, they own actually to the center of the creek.
Oh.
So the dam is on their property. So until we're able to, uh, convince them that it's a good thing, uh, I don't see this project necessarily moving forward. That's our impediment.
What about all the trees that are in, in the creek? If it's any of that stuff been removed going back? You know, remember we had the seven inch, eight inch rainstorm?
Yes, yes.
There's still stuff in the creek, right?
Um, we, we, the village board previously donated some money for Sullivan Woods and cleaning up that area. The Park District has put that to good use. They've done a fantastic job on Sullivan Woods and also Indian Creek, uh, up to, up to Buffalo Grove Road. Yeah, all the way from
Yeah, but I'm talking going out to Milwaukee Avenue. In other words, if you start at Buffalo Grove Road and you go east, east. You're like behind, you know, across the street from the Tiff District, that, that, that stretch of
Okay.
There's a lot of trees down there.
There's a lot of trees in that area in terms of, uh, the stream, half of it's in other villages and then the other half is in ours.
So, okay, so some of the, so even that, that far east is half ours and half what Prairie View or unincorporated areas?
Unincorporated, some of it I believe is in Lincolnshire, um, and some of it's in Buffalo Grove.
So who, no, who has jurisdiction over that? The Army Corps of Engineers?
So we have jurisdiction on the north side of the stream. Others have jurisdiction on the south side of the stream. I've had discussions how DuPage County does it. They, they, they have, uh, more revenues coming in in terms of taxing bodies. But they actually have it at a county level that the county takes care of the stream, so you don't have these multi-jurisdictional confusion.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, you know, the flow is just awful and it backs up, you know, it kinda towards Hawthorne Club. And anything else there, you know? Well, the golf course, we, yeah, yeah, right. Thank God the golf course is there, you know? Yeah.
I know with River Grove subdivision, my staff's been in there periodically pulling some of the debris out. On the dam also, we'd like the dam removed so we don't have to maintain pulling, uh, trees and brush from that. But, um, yeah, it, it is, uh, it is a concern. We try to help where we can. But, um, it's gonna take, uh, something bigger than just our village to solve that whole stretch.
Okay, so we don't have closure on that one?
We do not.
Okay.
And that's why it's not on next year's, uh, proposed program. Uh, let's see.
And we can hold out until, uh, the following year on the Crabtree Culvert?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Uh, move, uh, if I may, uh, moving forward, uh, the Village Hall, um, there's been some discussions. It, it, it came out of, uh, our Lashin Center meeting with area residents and what should happen. Uh, I know, I know Mark has, uh, scheduled a meeting with the Park District. We'll go through a liaison discussion. But one of the things we've talked to the Park District previously about is, uh, the tennis courts. Um, we think that the Park District should be in the business of maintaining and, uh, scheduling tennis courts. This one's gonna need resurfacing. Last time we just painted it, um, we didn't want to have the resources to fully redo the fences, uh, resurface the tennis courts. So we're looking to work with the Park District. They may be interested in, uh, managing the tennis courts, redeveloping it and then potentially adding a playground in that area too. It came out of those discussions. So what we've talked to them about is maybe we would con- contribute, you know, fifty percent or up to seventy-five thousand dollars to have them, uh, end up owning that, that property. Whether it's owned, whether it's, uh, just a, a license agreement, uh, that'll be brought back to the, this board for further discussion.
I think all the young neighbors in Hawthorne Club and Cherry Valley would appreciate that.
And then moving on to the muni, um, one area, I don't know the golf holes, bear with me, but there's, uh, up against Hawthorne Club's side, uh, there's a big area that is just a seed source throughout the village. And so we've added twenty-five thousand dollars for weed control there. We'll have some discussions with Kemper, whether or not they can mow it and they can manage it. Um, larger items that are musts, the HVAC system, there's been two different studies that the HVAC system for the muni is undersized. Uh, so we're recommending, uh, sixty thousand dollars for replacements. We have hard numbers on, on that. Clubhouse, it's due for a new roof, uh, thirty thousand. And then, uh, we always add ten thousand dollars for perimeter fencing repairs. Um, that's on an as-needed basis. Uh, we did not have to make any repairs this current budget year. It's more of a holding account. Arbor Theater, uh, sediment removal for the upper two ponds.
Going back, just, uh, uh, our relationship with, uh, this CNN Railroad. I mean, basically, uh, they have not removed a single dead, um, emerald, uh, ash tree um, along that siding there. That's gonna start either impeding their railroad or falling onto our fence and destroying the perimeter fence there. Is there anything we can do to facilitate their getting in there and doing their due diligence on taking down some dead wood?
Uh, I have contacts at the CN. Let me reach out to them. We have the discussions. We'll meet with them and we'll walk the area. And then I'll report back. Arbor Theater, sediment removal, the first, the upper two ponds, the, the dams are causing sediment. And in looking at, uh, we'd like to have it removed. That would be the first of, uh, two phases. We're looking at the second phase would be, uh, two years out from that. Um, path repairs, we've went through the entire Arbor Theater except for one small area. And it used to have the, uh, chip and seals with the pe- pebbles on it. We've completely removed that and there's just one small stretch left. That's twenty thousand dollars to address that. Comp, comp center, uh, the fl- the roof, nineteen ninety-five, it was, uh, installed. Two hundred thousand, those are some hard numbers with that. Uh, thermostat reheats and controls, twenty-five thousand. Uh, police department, the, um, the sirens, thirty-five thousand. Uh, you may recall that, uh, we have one, one budgeted for each year. We took care of the Oakwood, uh, one recently. The next one that we're proposing for this upcoming budget year would be at the high school. And then the following year, we would address the one at Route forty-five and Fairway Drive. That would get us through all of our sirens and they would be fully updated.
Are they all operational right now?
That's my understanding. Uh, let's see, and only a few more items left. Uh, Public Works Building, the, uh, storage bin design. We need some bins with, uh, roofs over them because we store certain things like topsoil and we need that material to be dry. So we'd like to move forward with, uh, a design for, uh, storage bins. Uh, building HVAC consultant study, this is for all buildings. Um, similar to the previous year where we had a consultant look at all of our roofs. We'd like, uh, consultant to come in and look at all of our HVAC systems. That's the, the next, uh, larger ticket item for our buildings that needs to be addressed. So we wanna get out in front of that. Uh, and also twenty thousand dollars for painting the interior of the Public Works Building. Uh, Vhack, I just wanna hit on that lightly, um, in terms of what our projections are. You'll see there's a number of items that are on the list. I think there's a lot of wish lists in this area. It totals, uh, four point three five million dollars. I don't see that we're gonna spend that much money, um, each year for a few years out. Um, so Mark and I talked about this. I'll put something together. I'll send it, uh, Mark and I will send it out to the trustees and just kinda get your feedback as far as are these things that we're looking to spend money in the immediate future prioritize which ones are most important to you, that should be at the top of the list? And so we'll send something out to you on that. Uh, but none are proposed for this, uh, proposed budget. Uh, Philip Road Building, uh, we, this board just approved a transfer of titles and we're looking to put in, uh, twenty thousand dollars to take care of some interior, uh, needs for that. Uh, last item, card access readers, um, the, uh, the fob systems and the access into our police buildings and the public, Public Works Buildings, those need to be updated. Um, in terms of the Public Works Building, we would go towards, uh, instead of a keypad, we would actually have fobs similar to, uh, all of our other buildings. So that's my presentation. Uh, if you have any questions, comments, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, is that it for tonight?
I think so.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Second?
Motion's a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, the meeting's adjourned. Yeah, I gotta, is this your stuff?